This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, so go ahead and start the basic items, Jessica.
So, welcome, everyone. This is a new space for us, so I think that urgency procedure, you're just going up that door right there. Hope there's no merge or the other way too large, so that's last of yours. Well, we'll try to go out first. And then agenda, are there any changes to the agenda?
I would ask that number five, seeing as we don't have Donna here today, seems to be able to access the documents.
Wait, is that from the next?
What's the date?
It's the 20th of February, yeah. Is everybody, is somebody not going to be here this week?
And just one request, Sue's going to be recording this during the minutes from the tape. That's the only microphone, so please speak on the other.
We're going to pull it.
So Duncan, you want to?
Uh, no, 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 no.
I was making a suggestion thinking hopefully we would have all of our commissioners.
Shut up.
Well, since Donna's not here, we can go. That's a low blow.
That's the way it goes.
Use it all the time.
That's right.
One of the jobs that we have in full house.
Well, it's like a lot of setting camp, so.
Might as well do it today.
I know the agenda just set up to be more. Why don't you go pretty good? So are you okay with keeping it as this one?
Yep.
Open to the public for items not related to the agenda. Anyone have anything that's not related to what we're trying to talk about?
Nope, since we don't have many plans, shouldn't tell them. Sure, I think it'll be straight up at least here.
Starting with here. Sure, my name is Paul Connor, I'm the Director of Planning and Zoning. I'm not on the planning commission, but I'm one of the two staff members too.
I'm the second staff member, and it's Kelsey Peterson, the senior player, also not on the commission.
I'm Jessica Lee South, more resource engineer. It was agenda.
I'm Paul Connor.
I'm Laurie Smith, the planning commissioner.
Brad McDonald. The planning commissioner.
Just random guy.
Two random guys.
Duncan McDonald.
Mark Dujek, planning commissioner.
This is the DRB. Now, it's finally.
If they're looking to get to the Mayor in City Hall at the, in the auditorium at the end.
Yeah.
Otherwise, we wouldn't be there.
Well, we're very likely to do this by now, yes.
We're way more, way more excited, guys. Well, how do you think?
I hope that was a little wet stuff off.
Yeah.
Okay, so. Okay, well, that was, well, I guess.
That's why we do it for us.
And we have one. Announcements. I can start with one. I gave an update to the city council last night about the city plan. I think both are in call, listened in. They're important, so I think I would say, and hopefully you all agree, that it comes to be positive. There was some discussion about the balance between different items, climate change, things like equity, and we're interested to see, you know, when it comes to them, the discussion about how we see balance between the different, different decision-making things that might come up for them in the future. I think we were kind of getting into maybe the examples of which it was hard when you're. You know, we didn't get any negative feedback, or you've got to change this.
Well, I, I could, I actually was wondering why that came up because equity and social justice appears in almost every section as a, as a, as a goal, but as information. So I was wondering why, because I may be missing the big answer, reason for why she would have that.
Yeah, I think. I actually originally brought it up saying, just wanted to make sure. And I think the reason that what you're saying didn't come through is because I was trying to be concise with the presentation, and I didn't say that, you know, I didn't say on a slide.
I was only supposed to butt up, but I didn't want to interrupt.
So the, Jessica, I spoke after the meeting last night. When we transitioned into the short presentations to read into your listening sessions and for any other review, we're going to swap out a couple of slides and make that message more clear that it's not just one slide, where these are, these are subject areas that carried through. So I think we can address that, that it's somebody on the commission, I think, on the council set. Well, it is carried through, it just maybe doesn't come through.
Can you speak up, Paul?
Turn the volume up. Challenged us.
I wondered if Tyler's concern wasn't more engaged to collaborative section rather than, you know, the equity section, and that wasn't, that kind of didn't stand out, didn't, that's a whole section.
Well, that's one of the four people.
Yeah, exactly.
I know you specifically mentioned affordable housing and housing in general, and that balance between open space and climate change and rosy. So I, I told them that, you know, we would hear all the public comment, and, you know, adjustments between the balance, what's really balanced.
I also heard that Tyler was concerned that focusing on the climate issues might put undue burden on lower-income people, and throughout our conversation about the, that they want to ensure that all as these issues move forward, they're going to move to equitable for all income.
Yeah, that's important, I think, while we, uh, thought, yeah, but we lie on. If we need to find money just to help lower-income people deal with, you know, improving the insulation or switching to heat pumps or whatever it is that is needed, you know, there's no way they can afford to do it, we've got to find money, but state, federal.
There's a lot of that money. We got, we got a last syllable.
Yeah, so that's one.
I think it's a good, you know, one of the objectives of the company, I think, to make sure we're consistent with the budget, in a lot of cases, not always something count, but like having a goal and knowing that there might be grant programs, there might be incentives, there might be, maybe there are tools that might get us to that goal, and making sure, you know, that's clear, we're not just saying this is back on our.
And we might even put that in our goals or actions sections under some of these. Listing securing, you know, looking for securing funds for equitable implementation.
Equity and climate plan.
Yeah.
So I would just say that funding has not appeared because it's sort of like how you, how you are able to do the action steps, or the action steps, so your goal is really to do more affordable housing, more, you know, climate-sensitive affordable housing, if something in that sort of goal language, the action would be to weatherize or enable weatherization of, or loan from homeowners or something along that line. Securing funding is something that is implied in that, that actually falls below the level of the plan, because there's a lot of stuff all the way through that requires funding, but it's at the level of operations to decide, is that a budget, the annual budget item, is that from a, from the House Trust Fund, is that from grant monies, and that's stuff that all kind of shakes out.
So we're going to, we're going to say, make sure that, that this, the weatherization, et cetera, is available and affordable for.
Maybe enable is a great word.
Maybe that should apply.
And it just leaves a lot of flexibility for how that happens, whether it comes from city funding or from a nonprofit or from federal government or, you know, a tax rate, something or other, like there's all these different mechanisms with that kind of funding.
Maybe that little comment to enable can be placed where we have, where we have listed all the, the objectives of the Climate Action Plan. We said, we want to, we want to weatherize so many houses, we want to get insulated so many houses.
I know we're, now we're going to do a more discussion.
Yeah.
It's more like item six a little bit.
Yeah. We'll come back.
I have a note about where I feel like we should go to the next slide. Any other announcements? Do you want our staff?
There is, I don't know if I can go, but the South Hero, I don't know if it's the Land Trust or it's just a community organization, they have a meeting, a public meeting tomorrow, sorry, not tomorrow, on Thursday up there, and it sounds like they're grappling with a lot of the things that we've grappled with throughout the three years we were working on the LDR, so they invited a few people to go. I'm not sure I can, it's from six to eight on Thursday, I might have, I can't wait, but I can send you information if it's interesting, but it's clearly they're struggling with the same kinds of things that other towns do, S-100 is one of the things they're worried about. And they're, they are worried about the plan to build a new wastewater facility which they believe will pollute the bay, there's a lot of, a lot of anxiety. They're looking for people who might have been through it before and have something to offer. I'll try, but.
Paul's done a good.
Not happy to sneer straight in.
We're trying to put the sound of the street.
Well, we can't unlock the door.
Any other announcements? Everyone.
DRB is very popular today.
Could maybe put a piece of paper on the door saying, we are not the DRB.
That's just the same.
Are you going to scare a piece of paper in the shop?
We are not the DRB.
Put it on the door.
In many states, the planning board is the developer board, so not here, not here. Although, there is a structure in Vermont government that most towns did have and some towns still do have, where the planning commission does all subdivision, you know, site plan review. DRB only does appeals and figure shows. Act six.
Isn't there a VBA?
Yeah, one of the acts.
Yeah, it's a way to go, you've got to have enough to do.
You guys don't have enough to do, right?
Yeah, let's just take on some site plans.
Couple of quick announcements from my end. One, our city manager, so we have twice a month, a city department head leadership team meeting, and then three or four times a year, we have one, Jesse called the expanded director's meeting. This is the directors and then the next level managers, folks across all departments. And the purpose of those ones is to introduce folks to core topics and things that citywide interest. So last time we did one with introducing the common plan. Tomorrow, our new planner, Nick, and Lou Brasey, who does energy work for us, are going to be leading the team through the first real dive into the government operations implementation plan of the Climate Action Plan, so really the kickoff of how do we as a municipal entity, as opposed to as a policymaker, take on all of the actions identified in Climate Action Plan, that is a slight change from our original plan, where our original plan was, if you recall, we applied for municipal planning grant here to have to go do this work, to still lead the team through, but it would be led by a consultant. We did an RFP, unfortunately, and we had one response, and it was only to do a portion of the work, and so we needed to not respond to one of these. And so Jesse has reassigned workloads to have Lou, who's been leading on our energy workover the last few years, and then decided by the main, we're going to control. So that's one, and it's a great kickoff. Two, just a little FYI that you may have heard of S-100. You may have heard that the, a small portion of it stood effect on July 1st about single families due classes, what you may not have heard is that in the special legislative session that took place at the end of June, where they tackled some of the overrides of the governor, and then also some legislation to deal with housing homelessness, it was a change in S-100 whereby all of the things that were to take effect in December of 2024 now take effect on July 1st, 2023. And that was approved in a day and signed by the governor. So we are working on some interim guidance that will come for folks in very short terms. And then, as planned, we were already ramping up to have this be a high priority, the major priority of the city council and the planning commission, this is the new comp plan, so it doesn't change our workload, but I didn't want to let you guys know.
Sorry, I'm busy.
Luckily, luckily, a lot of the things that were to take effect a year and a half ago are not typically immediate things that somebody is coming in today to say, oh, I want to build the thing tomorrow. It's more planning for larger things, but it is, it costs all my expense. So that's what we got. Just in case you felt like things were just a little too slow, you didn't have any, you felt rivalless on your work plans.
What's your best, enjoy the summer.
Well, look, it's okay.
We're going to have Labor Day weekend.
Went summer after that, yeah. August.
Okay.
Well, that's a good, given announcement. Anything else?
I'm barely waiting on the call.
What else you got in your pocket?
That's like lobbing a grenade into the heart. That's what I got to do. Oh, no, I knew that one little one, fun one. The new bike share program is launched, it's called Bird.
Nice.
And they, the, the program is slightly different than the other one in that there's no hubs, you don't have to turn the bike to a specific hub, it can be brought anywhere except areas that are prohibited within our community of Red Rock Park, anywhere in Wuski, Burlington, South Burlington. And you, as long as you leave it in a safe location, i.e. on a bike rack or in some cases in a leak belt, you can't just sort of dump it on the side of the road, you have to take a picture, prove that it's the position, and then your account basically gets credited and stuff. They started them in Burlington, and it's, they're starting to bring them to the rest of the community, so they start to see some, it's kind of fun to look on the app to see, live see where all they all are, so you can say, oh, look, somebody, this morning, somebody had brought one to Allen Road, so.
They've been in Red Rock Park.
But not in Red Rock Park, right?
Right, park right outside.
Right, as soon as.
And they sit there for a few days.
Which, that's, that's okay, that's.
But I get they go down that.
Yep, yep, so the system has it that Red Rock Park itself, the bike becomes disabled, so the electric assist doesn't help, and if you've ever been on a e-bike, that's a motor, you will get it like 11 feet before you decide it's a terrible idea. So that's how we geocoded the park, because we know that it's the kind of place that somebody might ride it other ones, and then Church Street is the same thing, so you could walk it down Church Street, but if you try to pedal it, not.
Although geolocation's easy to delineate.
Yes, yeah, so if we identify that there's areas that we're not expecting people to use it, like if we saw somebody riding in, say, a real nature park, we can contact them, and, and, you know, within a day, they can geolocate it and say that's a low-go area or a slow-speed area or something like that, so it's very easy to draw bots. Yeah.
They're much more functional than transportation.
I think so, being able to drop it where you actually need to go instead of leaving it, you know, five blocks away, yeah.
Or having it take time while it's doing, while you're doing what you're doing. You do something else.
Yep. Okay, that's all I got. Okay, so the next item is the only time of the year that I leave a meeting, so this is for election of the chair. As I described in the memo, I will accept any nominations, once I have all of the nominations, then I will ask whoever's been nominated if they would be willing to serve, if there's more than one, then we will decide, like, that discussion about it, and then typically, it will go by a motion and a second for our candidates, or the one we're doing. If commissioners would like, you can also go by paper ballot, but that is only for the first person. So that's what we got. I'm nominating Jessica Lee South, our chairperson.
That's a good job. Heard that.
I'm voting. Reading other people to.
I'm only, Duncan as vice chair.
Before I get to the vice chair, is anybody else who might nominate somebody different for chair?
I just hope Jessica.
Jessica, would you be willing to serve again as chair? Would you like a sharp stick? And if you want, you can do a whole slate together, or you can just do Jessica and Duncan.
There is a lot of, like, motion.
I'll second that.
Does any, would anybody else like to nominate somebody for vice chair? Have you since to take a vote?
No, we don't.
But I just want to see if there was anybody else, I just want to be as democratic as I can. I don't hear any going once, going twice, so there's a, there's a motion, was there a second on you? Okay, so Lori, so for Jessica for chair and Duncan for vice chair, all those in favor, please say aye. So there are two more activities we have, one is to dominate the clerk, clerk's job is theoretically to do minutes, but we have a certain time table, and it is also, in the event that the chair and vice chair are not there, the clerk decides how the meeting is run, so the chair themselves or the points.
I'm nominating Floyd.
I'll say. Oh.
Sir.
So now you better say that, if you're going to say one thing loudly today, that better be that with Sue there. She is, she's doing DRB right now. Okay.
We're being recorded, we're being recorded by that. That's why I spoke out there.
Are there, so I didn't hear any other nominations, was there a motion for Paul? Okay, all right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, and then the last item, I guess you can, Jessica, that is the regular date and time, which currently is the second and fourth Tuesdays at 7:00 PM.
Sorry, who were the nomination and the second for Paul, I'm just taking notes in case.
The day that the vice chair.
Okay, just in case they, the microphone.
So I vote that we keep our current regular meeting dates, terms and limitations of the second and fourth Tuesdays of the month at 7:00 PM at City Hall, except as modified by the.
Sure.
Okay, any discussion on the motion? On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Bring past unanimously.
Well, you all feel spectacularly at the sign, you know, I don't want to be told.
Well, I don't know.
What else do we have? Special committee.
I was thinking, no, if he didn't, then she would be nominated, her, her job was.
I have one other question, that we try and make our, create our agendas, that they can be done by nine or 9:30 rather than.
Someone else have brain fade off. Paul, I believe that you sent a note offering that you would love to be a thank you, that we folks are tracked.
Yes, pardon my clerk job.
Yeah, that's part of the clerk job.
I was talking about trying to do it, but if you were, the job instead of these.
We'll give you a cattle prod.
Oh, it's taboo buzzers. I know. You know, Michael, we really try, I think what's required is, you know, like this extra meeting tonight, like our last meeting, we were thinking, okay, we've gone through all the sections twice, probably pretty good, a two chance and three room, and then people had a lot of things they want to talk about. And, you know, I think it's hard for me to be like, no, we're done with comments when, when people are still having their conversations.
Look, I know that meeting was, we were trying to get to a certain place, and just we made the effort. It was wrong especially.
Overall, we've been pretty good.
Yeah, been 30, we call many meetings more than pass them.
I don't recall any rules that come before.
We've, we've had a lot of discussion in the last couple. We've had a few.
One can usually tell by looking at the agenda whether that's realistic or not. You heard of that?
So speaking of. Speaking of, I would invite you to all dive into the rest of the chat area.
Let's do it.
Shut up, you're going.
Okay, so just, I know we said we're going to pick up after this, but we had the discussion during the announcements about making sure it was clear that the implementation was going to be equitable. On page six, under, in the introductory section, we have a section called implementation, and then it lists out different tools for implementation. I feel like in there, we could add another sentence to that effect, you know, we don't need to say what the words are right now, but just to add a sentence about.
What page is that on?
It's on page six.
In the original, yeah.
Under the straight thunder and meditation, where it talks about the tools and techniques, having the monthly tasks.
Enable.
And I'm okay with just adding something, but.
I think that's a great spot, or a statement about regardless of the tool that we purchase.
Okay, and then back on track, so on page 48.
Just have one thing.
Okay.
Somebody asked me if we could speak up. Sidewalk maintenance.
So we have a, so this is more on the annual budget side, but we have a budget related to path improvements, so the red path system is about $30,000 or $40,000. There's paving budget, and then there's a sidewalk that's a big budget that this year is $2,000, which is about enough money to pay for the sign to say that there's sidewalks ahead. So this is something the council began looking at a little bit, and, you know, sidewalks, red paths, they will often get used, you know, a little bit entertaining, but either way, that's, that $30,000 budget last year was entirely used and more for an improvement between Sinesty Park and Stonehenge, where there was a, there was sort of a bump area and a culvert, and just that one improvement was more than that budget, so I think that's the scale of subjects. So I think the plan talks pretty strongly about the movement, the investment in bicycle and pedestrian facilities, and so, you know, feel free if you want to talk about the importance of it, the subject of budgeting is sort of an annual question and maybe something. The subject of budgeting is sort of an annual question, and maybe something you're more than welcome to provide feedback to the council that's consistent with both the current plan and the future plan, we'd recommend that they add money to the budget. The plan says one thing, and then the budget is how do you implement the plan, so.
To recover.
I feel pretty good about it, but it's your plan.
Wouldn't it be worth saying something other, either goals or actions to ensure?
I think that the key question, so the annual, it's always gonna be an annual discussion about how much you fund the things. I think the question is, is speaking of the importance of system sufficiently covered for you. We try not to get into the question in the plan about funding the thing. But it's the, is having a well-made system.
I don't remember seeing.
I'm sure.
Yeah, we do have, Lori, there is one that says prioritize construction investment.
For maintenance?
Well, that means talks about investing in...
So, so I'm here, under transportation goals, the first bullet. If we specifically call that, if we added and maintain, so complete and maintain, and then possibly called out specifically sidewalks in that list of things, the shared use paths by embedded structure could fight, and infrastructure includes it, but you could call it out specifically.
That would be great, completely maintain.
It would look like...
We also have it in the four bullets, which, four bullets, sustainable built environment says, support a safe, resilient, varied transportation system that promotes development and redevelopment throughout the period. So we do talk about it there, yeah.
So it makes sense. I think everybody.
Paul?
Duncan?
No, I was just saying we're done.
Okay, so we're down on transportation, so a lot of community history and culture, anything in there?
Yeah. On page forty-eight, right in the top.
Short sections, maybe no one wants to...
In the stuff I sent out, there was a paragraph about the Ebonaki, which we agreed back in June. Maybe you weren't here to check up. For the June thirteenth meeting? Were you here?
I think so.
Anyway, we agreed to put that, that paragraph that I haven't read up at the front of the section. Will we read it?
Yeah, I do remember this discussion. You did have information about how they...
Yeah, the paragraph.
Yeah, it's the discussion.
That's what you wanted, you said to go up front. No, it's, I believe it is at the end now. Well, it's not exact, that's... We could, I'm open to put it, if it's a more appropriate spot to put it. That's fine, but that's what we, we had to...
So it's currently sort of midway through page fifty-one. Oh, okay. So the, the last paragraph in historic sites and structures, which is not a great...
It's a page.
Oh, okay. This is, I'm working with Dr. Mina, we had edited last time, so. Yeah, so that's most of your language, Michael, just a little bit tweaked.
I think fifty-one in today's paragraph?
Yes.
Yeah, just above the word. Yeah.
I'm happy to do it, but that's where that language.
Yeah, we can put it, we can either take this out and do that where it is, or bring that in here.
It is in there. I think you just say you want it in the front, and right now it's in the back.
Well, it's, I don't think the case is the same.
It's not exactly the same. It was, it was changed to match the tone of the rest of it, but the, the core, most of it is the same.
It just doesn't, it started with the words recognizing history once well made.
No, I'm sorry, that's, that's your...
I've just noted where I put the feedback from Jim. It wasn't that it didn't make it in, it just was edited a little bit and... Put there. Including...
Page fifty, the section, the section.
The play, yes. It also included a little bit that Paul Angles had suggested about the Champlain Sea and Twelve, and habitations of twelve thousand years.
So that paragraph just got edited, the first sentence is regarding the years and Paul's part.
So why don't we just put that there?
Why put it in the front?
Well, we'll put it in the front and leave this out.
Oh, Paul, I added the word. Champlain Sea.
What's the point of putting it in the front?
Well, we've, we've tried to recognize the history and cultural contributions of the Ebonaki and Wabanaki. Yeah, and this we mentioned it here. It's information I got directly from Chief John Stevens about their history, so I think it's relevant. And I think UBL has something similar.
So, may I suggest that you do choose to put it towards the front, maybe after the first paragraph, because the first paragraph in the black text here tries to set a tone about history and picture. Talk about it. As we support new cultural ventures important to the past, appropriate historical buildings, landscapes, and views, we'd say, and culture. Or, and, yeah, and maybe then afterwards, take notice, it seems a little bit inverse intention, one and then...
Just need to put it in one place.
I think it's better for today in the community, in the intro, rather than historic sites and structures. It's not really talking about sites and structures.
I'm also happy you're repeating the section. It's just where it's at.
Okay. As, as long as the, as long as the content that's in this is, in this, I'm not concerned about the specific wording.
My final word is, I mean, it is probably our oldest history and culture. So why don't we put it, put it where we, where it is now?
Where it is in your draft?
Yeah. Which is what we agreed back then, whether we were, I'm not, whether to it, if the commission wants to change it, it's, it's, put it somewhere else and then put it where...
Can we put it as the second paragraph?
The second paragraph?
Yeah, yeah.
Let's put it as the second paragraph, and I want to make sure we don't lose Paul's suggestion about the Champlain Sea, which is currently located.
It could be added to it, right?
So what I was doing was moving the whole paragraph, that's the last paragraph, and putting it up above. Unless there's something specific about the wording.
Is there, it sounds like Michael was really into his wording. Is there a reason not to use that and then it falls?
Yeah, add that.
It was edited down to be a little bit shorter, a little bit more concise, and to fit with the flow of the rest of the section, but that's just...
Does Michael's include the statement about engaging with the Ebonaki community for consultation? I think that's a...
The Michael version?
Right, no. I think that, I mean, it's up to, it's up to you guys, but not only referencing half, but present as well.
Okay, so it sounds like we're...
The paragraph.
We should, we should add... We, we need to make a decision. I think we should add that people have lived in this area for at least twelve thousand years since the time of the Champlain Sea. And where's, where's the sentence about engaging with them?
On your draft, it's on page three.
Yeah.
You must recognize the history of the area and should engage with the Ebonaki community in consultation about the history of this land and possible arid sites.
So are you comfortable with using, it sounds like, the bulk of Michael's new language, meaning something about that sentence and then adding what Paul said about twelve thousand years, moving into the second paragraph of the whole thing?
Yes.
Thanks.
I think so. I mean, Michael is sharing the same language that we got in June that I then edited. So if you don't like what I wrote and what maybe you wrote, that's why I just want to be totally clear. It's ninety, what I edited is like eighty-five percent what Michael has, and I, it's, it's fine to keep that. It's just a different tone than the rest of it. It doesn't matter to me.
Struggle between.
No, honestly, I'm just trying to...
It cares to Mike, it matters to Michael, so.
It doesn't, it doesn't matter to me. What matters to me is that we agreed to do something and we don't do it. Why I had it must for a meeting with you, because I don't know how to keep up with what anybody has suggested and anyone ends up here. So then I read it, and it's different.
Right, but the, the... The language, the mission is asked that there also, that language be put into the text of the style of the writing of the whole plan. So unless the commission says this exact wording or assumption of your broad guidance here, make the language thick in the, in the context, that's why Kelsey might...
Yeah, that is the mind. Not in this case, Paul, in this case, we said, let's do it, and it goes there, and then we moved on. I don't remember that decision, but you're the one who made it.
You were checking the meeting. The commission also would like to do things moving along.
Yes, yes, yes.
We may not move beyond this.
I think we have to have some confidence. Kelsey.
So I do.
Report rating.
I do like what she wrote, because she has like an introductory sentence, and then what you wrote, and then Paul wrote it. I think what she did is what we asked, a sentence to make it fit your information, or Paul.
This is where it's moved to, and I'm happy to change language, and I don't know why, but it's not keeping up with me.
So you're putting it in the third paragraph instead of the second.
Okay. So after the word endeavor?
Yes, okay, yeah.
Don't forget she's editing, probably including, sure, that's short of poss, that's possibly.
But I, where it is now?
Where?
I think that's what we just discussed. Okay. Anything else in this section?
Yeah. I don't, not another message.
Okay.
I just said one. No, just in the section. Just a general comment that somehow, and I don't know if it would go in this section, but should, I was feeling we should have some kind of a recovery plan for catastrophic event that might happen, self-reliance, like a tornado goes through.
There's an all hazards mitigation plan, that's in the city community services section, that's not in this section.
Coming up.
It's down, down there.
Okay.
And that's a plan that the city adopts formally every five years. And so in here, it becomes referenced, sort of like the climate action plan. So this is the umbrella that sets the tone. For example, this most recent version of the all hazards mitigation plan, we pushed very hard for the consultants, who were meeting on a statewide model, to include more reference to climate change into that draft. So we have the coverage of plan to help guide it, and again, in five years, we'll push it even harder.
So it's on page fifty-five.
And we'll get there, hold on.
Recreation.
I had one question or one comment on page fifty-one or fifty-five, depending on you know your whole package. We had something in the previous iteration that it would not be city policy to convert passive natural recreation areas currently possessed to developed park. And I, I can't find it anywhere.
Was that in the twenty sixteen thing?
No, no, in the previous draft of this.
So that wasn't a previous draft. I don't remember where it was exactly. It was removed when we were, when we talked a bit more about... When we were, we were originally talking in a framework of active parks and active recreation and passive recreation and why things that way. And then we started talking about developed parks and natural areas. And so in that whole discussion, it was removed because the line between those two things can be a little bit... You can have, we can have one property that has a section that's developed and the rest of it is natural, like Wheeler is even that, that way, where you have the whole, you know, nature area, but then you have a dog park and a homestead, so. But it's all one property.
It's one property, but it's not one. That, that's not the park. The nature, the national, the nature park excludes the homestead and the dog park and going up to, and the community gardens.
I guess, so I guess my, my, what I'm trying to say, and I can't find the right words to say, is it was removed to, to try to add some clarity to some of those possible mixed situations, instead of locking the city into one thing or the other. With no intention that an entire area would ever be, you know, converted from fully wetlands to a dried out bellcores or something. But, but that you could have like a dog park or a playground or a picnic area or something that would technically be a developed area that's on the like intersection corner of what is otherwise considered currently to be a natural area. So that's, that's why it was...
Red Rocks Park would be a good example of that, because it's a natural area, but it's got beach house and it's got developed parking.
We don't want to put...
Actually, Hubbard Park would be another good example.
Hubbard Park, Hubbard Park is why I think something like this has to stay in.
But last night, a decision was made for bike path to be put down to the center.
That's it, they're limited.
And that's, and that's, they're working on, on wording to make sure for that part, that's the case. But if this, if this was in...
The only thing that would do that is a conservation...
And you're talking about the...
But if it gets dark, it's, it's vulnerable, as is the Scott problem, which has no protection whatsoever, and it's a total, total area. So I would like to see something here that, that says we, it's not, it says what we had before, which is not city policy to convert natural areas, if you want to leave out the passive natural slash natural, because I know there was a disagreement about, about it, because I like to distinguish passive and active. We decided not to do it. But I think we should have something in there that says city policy not to convert natural areas currently possessed to develop park.
I think another challenge that you have is that unless a property has been designated as a natural area, it doesn't have a designation until it has. So.
Yeah.
By, by city council, so that's...
It's called the Hubbard natural.
Right, but for, you, you use Scott, and I think Scott's, you know, it, it's completely landlocked, but it has no designation. It was purchased with the fund that can be used for recreation or, or conservation, but it is not designated in any way. There is no claim to do anything.
It can be useful, but if it's passive.
Duncan?
Michael, is your concern that somebody turns on the party?
Absolutely. We've got people who were there last night who have, in the past, went under with, at that time, was... Absolutely. We've got people who were there last night, uh, who have, in the past, when Underwood at that time was purchased, came to the council and said, we should sell half of it for housing, build a lot of houses there. And with that money, we could get back everything that we paid for it, you know, have a half a park. And, uh, there was another comment made, which resulted in this idea of the conservation easement being put in a parallel park, not, not included, not tied. Uh, who said, to ask that question, that is, is the conservation easement, um, tied in with the agreement to have a park? Because that would prevent us from doing all kinds of other things on that park in the future. So there's, we aren't, our parks are not protected. Red Rocks isn't protected either. Some future council could, could, some, somebody from the Red Rocks Development Company could say, we want to buy or develop part of the contiguous part of, of Red Rocks.
Wow, you're talking about development.
So that's actually.
Creating a field.
You're still.
You're talking about development.
Well, I'm not.
I'm not talking about development. I'm talking about like fields, fields to play sports on.
That's, that's.
That would be the destruction of a natural area. A field is a lawn.
No, I understand.
No, I know. It's, it's to avoid that, including that playing fields. I, I don't disagree, but that's, I don't even want to put a playing field in the Scott property.
Well, under recreation actions, we have prepare a parks master plan. Looking something like that, does that fit into how you prepare the parks master plan?
Exactly where parks master plan comes to say Scott property should be X and, and S. So you could include a parks master plan, and you could include a statement that provides clear designations and long-term intent for citywide, for property citywide. Maybe that's a way to address this.
What, what is the harm? Let's ask, what is the harm of putting something like that in this document, which is not binding?
So I, what I see is your statement wouldn't prevent coming to your house, and you're talking about a natural area that I do.
Yeah.
And I think the harm is that we've been talking for many, many years about needing a parks master plan to do that, like, okay, we own this land, we're not doing any of that. Is it appropriate to have a small picnic area? Is it appropriate to have, who knows, a dog park or whatever? I'm not talking about any particular listed land, but to say, these are the city-owned lands, they're currently parks, but maybe not cooperating with. You know, I just, I guess for me, I feel like we'd be, like getting in front of the parks master plan process, make a really strong statement.
Parks law, I just say, is a completely separate document from this.
Well, it's not. If you make the statement that you said, then, uh, it's kind of limiting the scope of a parks master plan to not be able to even consider a property.
And make your hand.
Intentional.
Right, and I'm saying this, it's like the park. In this case, like I, I do think that if it is a beautiful natural area and we all agree that it should, you know, that it's a natural area and important, a lot of the passive recreation is, but I think there might be the case where we own a piece of property and haven't had that discussion about it yet. Maybe it's in a part of the city that doesn't have access to it, kind of.
And the question I had about this is, if this were in this plan and this plan were active now, would it have prevented them from putting a bike path to the center of their park?
Kind of thinks.
Because the bike path is, is a developed park.
It's not converting, uh, let's say you have a problem from one. Nature or kind of property to another.
As I said, I think one of the challenges you have is that many of the city-owned properties, especially new ones, don't currently have a designation. They were purchased with the fund. They could be used for multiple things. It may have historically been agriculture, or historically been unveiled, but it isn't designated as one or the other, and that's a, a challenge.
And there's, there's also a disconnect between, uh, the original, um, ballot that voters voted on, which was that establishing the conservation fund. And it's specifically set for the purchase of land and rights in land, uh, to preserve open space and natural areas. That was the original. Then in 2000, 2008, it was changed to allow, um, the use of these funds to purchase not only open space and natural areas, but, uh, land for recreation, would allow recreation. So, uh, they do allow recreation, but this limits it. There's a kind of recreation that we have on, um, on the grid. And, um, there's the kind that you have at Baycrest Park or JC or Farrell or, which is active. It's an all field and Farrell. I don't know about JC and Senanski. Those are all parks which are designed for active recreation and sports.
I said it, I said it, the motion that Helen made to buy the building, and it was clear to me at the time that we were buying property to be a park. There were all fields there, side of fields.
That's not what I learned from a person who was most in, uh, constructive, in getting that.
What I heard last night was.
Last night has nothing to do with.
Over a period of time, it's gone from being a park with all this.
Yes, because we've learned, we've got very smart status of. Yeah, we've got smart since 2013 and 2018 and 2015. I served on those.
Kids don't have any.
I served on those.
Okay, okay, but let's just.
Finish it. Yeah.
So Michael made a suggestion of adding that one sentence.
Putting it back.
Um, is anyone seconding Michael's motion?
To put it back, where, what?
I'm not hearing a second.
What's the motion?
You, you motioned to add it back in.
I didn't make the motion, but I'll do so now.
Okay, well, I said you made the motion. Now that you made the motion, does anyone actually think? Yeah. We will move on to the next one. Uh, anything else in recreation before we move on?
I want, I want to say one thing right now. Michael, just want to say something to you. Last night, you got up and you said very clearly that you were distressed with all the separation and division that was going on. It feels like that's happening right here in this Roman Field, what we're doing.
I feel.
And I would like to ask you to find a way for us to work collaboratively, because that's where we're really going to get good progress.
I think we've done a very good job of doing that these last few months.
Yes.
And now we're in the, you know, down in the last few laps of this race, uh, there's some ditty written together.
And you just, and you just called us wusses, and that's inappropriate. So I just want to.
I apologize. I apologize for.
Thank you.
You know, Michael, fair to say, like, there were multiple things that I presented on as our vision that I didn't vote for. You know, so I'm, I'm putting our group votes ahead of what I might think personally.
Yeah.
I think that's important, and you know, I think for probably 95% of the suggestions you, you've made, no question. Well, we had a discussion.
I agree with, I've, I've agreed with all kinds of things, but in my heart of hearts, I, I don't agree, but I didn't say, say so.
You know.
It's for all of us.
I just don't want to, I just don't want to disintegrate after doing so much good work, and I would request that you keep it simple.
I'll do my best. Yeah, I'm, it's pretty heated when I'm, when I'm confronting something that I believe in fashion.
I understand.
Okay, so are we done with recreation, community services? So Fran, this is where, um, some of the all hazards mitigation language is in there. And, uh, one of the things that I was actually thinking about in our last, um, iteration, 2016, had one that was specific to flood emergency. Um, it said plan for flood emergency preparedness and response. It was objective at the time, and I'd like to put that back in there if possible. Floods was subjective. Can I create any good?
All of that could share.
Cause I, would you have an account for both long-term and accurate impacts of climate change and development and implementation of the C's on every implementation plan?
Yeah, I think that typically is going to be something that in our, within the regional planning condition, there's statewide, um, goal that specifically say call it flood resilience, so you'll probably get better than comment.
So as a quick clarification, are you, look, I'm just over, I'm looking over at your notes. Would you want, is that, is that a goal statement or?
You know, I wasn't sure. I think it could be a heartbeat statement, but we didn't have a goal that was specific to the, in that event of, I almost wonder.
Could be a general.
Like a general goal about all set, all hazard mitigation. I'm, I'm open with the wording in the light way. But like a general goal about hazards.
The thing I was thinking, that was in the back of my mind, was, uh, if, if a flood or a tornado come through and had destroyed like eight or 10 homes, that there would be some type of, uh, something in maybe the LDRs that had a quick process to update, or to maybe allow temporary housing on those floods. And something that you didn't have to go through a full proposal to develop a new house, you could follow the same footprint, it would be quickly approved.
Okay, I think, um, so.
But that's.
That's an interesting idea, Fran. The, the, um, all hazards mitigation plan in the cities, emergency operation plan talk about, um, and I think it's referenced in here, but we'll do a little better. It's not a four stage of, um, emergency. There's, uh, response, recovery, mitigation, response, recovery, no, preparedness. Mitigation, response, recovery. So I think you're talking about sort of the recovery and how do you enable in recovery? So, um, I think that's a, that's an action that we consider, because I don't think that that's something that we, we talked about recovery from the emergency service providers perspective and how we. On our end.
Would FEMA be by a role in such a situation, temporary housing?
In the really extreme ones, yes.
Well, sorry.
Medium extreme, one person probably not, 10,000 people, absolutely.
But, but even with FEMA, they can still run into issues of, of regulations, local, local regulations. So trying to make it to those local regulations get streamlined and secure. So, I mean, local regulation might say you can't have a, you can't have a trailer on this side of this single family house, but in the emergency, you might allow that so people don't.
Right. I've been thinking about.
I would tell.
I've been thinking a little bit about, uh, Burlington this recent action, but essentially emergency shelter housing on a city-owned lot, um, on, um, what I think it is.
Yes.
That's most of it, because it's not exactly the kind of emergency, but a, a kind of emergency, and I don't know that our regulations were equal enough to do something like that. But I think that's an example of pressure.
Yeah.
Is something along those lines, sorry, it's a small.
Plan for people and efficient recovery of housing in new buildings after natural disasters or emergencies.
Yeah.
Yeah, so much.
I added our emergency because of Paul's example about homelessness, like there's some other bits that are not quite natural disasters. And then I added, uh, so this is, I'll add something up in the goal about planning for hazard. For which the all hazard mitigation plan is the action, but to put higher goal kind of above that act. Um, if I can just jump in here, this is, so the redlining that you're seeing is what I have worked up as getting Paul angles, goals and actions given to the plan from, from last night. So under goals, it says promote a culture of collaboration and participation in city governance, that should be a C. Um, and planning by emphasized transparency, inclusivity and accessibility. Um, that's, the achieve is just some slight tweaks to that, to an existing one. Um, I, we added enhance neighborhood level engagement in city handling planning processes. And then down in actions, a little bit of word tweaking, but then adding these two, strengthen mechanisms for public engagement by creating an equity toolkit, which we already have funding to do, and we'll be doing. Predictable early involvement opportunities and providing a range of public input methods. Um, continuously evaluating and adaptive engagement approaches to meet the needs of a changing community incorporating feedback from residents and stakeholders. So it's a, it's, a lot of the language is directly from what Paul, um, sent out. It's just tweaked a little, you know, collapsed a little and sort of found a place where it, it felt like it should.
I would.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah, right. Nice to, nice to put that in from the last page.
Or, some language.
Since you weren't going to be here.
Right.
Especially when it's going to do it.
They got flagged.
Yeah, right.
Okay, are we ready to go on to water?
I had two quick things on 62, um, that paragraph about the universe of your mind. My question, that last sentence, city will continue to work with you on one of those city long-term goals. Should we raise that to an action? It seems like, I mean, they are our biggest landmark, right?
Yeah.
I mean, I, I, I always go back to thinking about the natural areas, everybody who's city owned, and again, people just assume that those are.
That they will never disappear.
Yeah, exactly. So I, I, I feel like something along with that sentence would be an action.
Honestly, I might just copy that.
Yeah.
Continue, what I just highlighted, starting with the word continue, because we've been starting these things first.
Yeah. Um, the other thing, and I just. Um, a couple of paragraphs above that, kind of that school district, there's a quick, small paragraph, isn't just been that significant investments across all facilities, current future needs and community that need to be needed in the coming years. When we say significant investments, I, I, I was thinking about this, but here it's community, but the elementary schools. Are we talking about just investing in the current buildings or are we talking about placing those as two different things, and both of them could come into play? I think I wrote that sentence, and I was trying to acknowledge an extremely important subject in the community. And the city's supportive role towards the school district. In that, you know, we are responsible for the same taxpayers, and then not trying to make any statement beyond recognizing that there's a substantial scale of investment to be made.
Because, and also the school has their own planning process, so their decisions about whether it's upgrading or replacement or partial replacement, that's, that's on their side of things. So I don't know if we even know what they'll end up planning to, to do.
I was just thinking about describing the whole scale, maybe needed in the years ahead. I don't know. Do you have thoughts on how you, you know, I was, it's just significant investments, something about replacing facilities, because that may become necessary.
Read, have a big word with this.
Yes, yeah. I think we need to be honest that I don't know, like, I take a ton of money in secondary old elementary spaces. That's been a big.
Yeah.
I'm going to throw away my.
And still ducking the arrows on that one.
Yeah, you're right. I know, and it sits on.
Yeah, I, 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 the first thing I feel like it would. I think you, yeah.
And I have a quickie in the beginning of the first sentence of the paragraph above that, where it says South Burlington School District is facing changes. I think it should say, will continue to face changes in utilization, because certainly in my tenure, the schools have gotten full, and then they've gotten empty, and then they've got too many buildings, and then we sell them off, and then we have to buy new ones. So it's not like this is something new. This is going to be a continuing thing. And I, I think that it would make sense to say, we'll continue to face changes in utilization.
So I've got these two things. The first one, where the cursor is, is Laura's thing you just said, and then the one below is what I added into the sentence response to the government.
Revaluation.
I think you probably don't need to include the word possible revaluation. There will certainly be.
I think you probably don't need to include the word possible rehabilitation. There will certainly be some more rehabilitation regardless. I mean, that's just in that period.
What if I just want to add extra words? Just I've gone all the way down, not going back up. My goals are going back to 250.
Start in the right.
Did you get rid of the U?
Yeah.
Some water I need to.
Need a lot of that.
You got a lot of it? I'm over it just now.
There's a joke, water over there.
I'm like.
Yes.
So. Culver?
What is Culver? There's a T.
Isn't there a T in Culver?
There is a T in Culver, but you won't have one. Where? Second bullet under.
Oh, the second word Culver in the second bullet. It's at the beginning of the sentence as well.
Oh, yeah. You only said the wrong one.
I was like, there isn't.
Culvers.
You know.
Oh, this is.
Oh, this is.
We have the bullets written first.
Somewhere, yeah, somewhere. It's actually part, we just, we talked about it being part of this action, second action.
I think we talked about this before, just calling out that second bullet under goals is a massively ambitious goal.
Yeah.
Yep.
So just, just calling it out. I don't.
Technically.
By 2033, we've got to do it.
Where's the 20 years, 20 years, 24 years?
No, that's our, that's the, that's the mandate from, from the state, from that, that. It, it could be changed. That's what our small water folks tell us this is probably more area investment, but the flow restoration plans are supposed to be agreed by that.
Okay, well, let's make the goal, we'll be ambitious.
We don't have the goal, then we won't be working for it.
This is, this tracks with the climate ones, with the formal housing ones, of a approach of not self limiting on where we really want.
I underlined that.
Okay.
We pointed it out.
I've got a question about wastewater. Does that come up here? Because wastewater treatment doesn't have goals and actions.
But, yeah.
My question, my question is, I know that Burlington has significant issues with combined sewer overloads, discharges. Go south through.
No.
None at all.
Zero combined. And in fact, I'm excited to say that three or four years ago, we did a big project in Falls neighborhood that used to go to Burlington and therefore be part of the combined sewer system and grew into Bartlett, which meant that we both lowered rates and helped water there. So we have no combined. But that said, we should probably include an action of we are in the major capital phases and the border segment, a massive generational operational upgrade to that plant. So we could it's gonna be 30, you know, 35 million dollar rate. So we could probably call it a.
And that's, that's for the part.
Yeah. So that's just a systematic generational upgrade. It's not changing capacity. It's just.
So regarding my first question, it was brought up because of Michael's question about tertiary or treatment and avoiding sewer overflows is much more important than trying to achieve tertiary discharge.
Which we do. So we don't have a problem with sewer overflows.
That's fabulous. And the other question that I had about our sewers, particularly in this relationship with rehab that's going on, has any discussion been placed in doing reclamation of geothermal in our wastewater?
So I'm going to answer that from the perspective of, at the beginning of the meeting, I noted that we are embarking on climate action, government operations strategy.
Yeah.
One of, if not our biggest emitter of CO2 in the city youth is the wastewater picking plants. So that to us is embedded against the subject of, we have a climate action plan. It says government operations, maybe factoring that on cross all centers. So to me, that's covered in there. I don't think it's a specific what we got to do.
What I'm telling you about is the wastewater that's going through the plant is 50 plus degrees. Geothermal can heat all the houses in that area from the waste heat that's in that water that's going through the plant.
Sorry, I knew we were talking about.
Yeah. So I just want to mention that because if they're upgrading the plant, for them to put a geothermal coil in the building would be a huge energy savings for the city and provide heat at a, at a dramatically reduced cost.
Is it a heat exchange rather than geothermal?
They're using the geothermal. So water comes in at 50, you know, that for you, that all the.
Yeah.
These years in between.
Take the heat out of it.
So we definitely want to make more wastewater blocking. These three topics can be combined, one or not. It seems like they're the general, like, like maintain and upgrade our wastewater system, including generational updates at Bartlett Bay and installation of geothermal and tertiary.
I think I'd suggest, you know, maybe something slightly more general than that one specific, because there's all sorts of things we want to, what we should try to do in that upgrading that gets multiple. So maybe it's, you know, uh.
Well, it's thermal efficiency.
Updates for that or climate goals or something like that. And then read risk recreators. And I'm happy Laurie to take that specific suggestion and bring it directly to.
If you take that specific and bring it to the design folks, because that's something that's been, there's, there's a lot of effort around, uh, uh, community geothermal and wastewater plants are one of the best places to, to make it happen. The, I have a question about.
Let's just make sure we finish this. And then is it an and updates to the wastewater system to meet climate and water body goals? We're about two goals.
Well, I think what Laurie's saying is to make it to get thermal efficiency out of it.
Wait, no, I get that. But I'm just saying, we just have one goal about the generational updates and now we want to have our action. We need an additional action to update our wastewater system.
Do it. The reason I'm asking is tertiary treatment is incredibly expensive. And, and we already, if we're not having any discharge, I'm assuming we're already exceeding the, the, all of our discharge standards.
I'm not an expert in the operational, but my understanding is that our, our airport parkway facility and we plan the upgrades to Bartlett Bay will have a very forefront speaker. Maybe there's a broader statement that can be made that doesn't get into the hyper specifics of a given technology that speaks to the Bartlett Bay upgrade and, you know, positioning ourselves
for future.
Technology, climate, et cetera. Maybe we can work with our public works people to help us. If, if that's the message that you're trying to give to clients who are, who agree to that without getting into one specific technology, because I think there's so many opportunities for this. We wouldn't want, say, one to exclude the others.
Yeah. And they're, they're doing nothing. You're.
I'm like, I asked Bob Fisher a few questions about the, do we exceed the permit requirements for, for that wastewater treatment? And a couple of other questions. So.
What did he say?
I haven't had an answer. It was just today.
Oh, okay.
And it had nothing to do with, well, it was a consequence of business or that we got, we got to spend our time on this because we don't have the expertise. So I sent a few questions to him. And then when I get an answer, I'll certainly share it with you, Laurie.
Would you mind sharing those questions with us so that we can follow up with it? It's a little bit easier for us to.
I don't know if he responds from. He'll do them all the time. He needs, he's busy. I understand.
So I added that language, which I will fix a little bit. But that's, that's the general thought?
Yeah.
That I put in there? The other thing I just wanted to point out is up in the goals, this is one of those opportunities where something may not appear to be expressly said, but in collapsing some goals together and making sort of broader cross cutting, cross cutting statements. What I've just highlighted is sort of a, a very general statement, and this is not new language. It's a general statement about wastewater, about stormwater, about, you know, other, other opportunities to reduce nutrient loading. So it's, it's, it would include things like innovative, innovative, innovative upgrades to wastewater treatment, but also meeting our stormwater goal, but also reducing the application of portable weather. Like all these things can land under this umbrella goal about, which is the, which is the goal, which is reducing. Just pointing out that it doesn't look like it has those magic words, but.
But they're there. Yeah. Nutrient loading is.
It is magic.
Are we ready to go on human use plan?
I had a quick question under solid waste, which is what control can the city have, if any, over restricting packaging? You know, cities have no plastic bag bins and things like that. The amount of plastic that is coming through our town every day in packaging, whatever, is there anything?
Maybe the address will. State probably don't have authority unless, so unless it's been granted. So even the term billables may not be back. I'm not aware of any.
State has all, all the control.
Right. We can only do it if they allow it to do it.
The other thing is just functional. It just made me immediately think of the California emission standards for vehicles because, because California is such an enormous market for vehicle, that emission standard effectively became the national emission standard. Because, um, then Toyota, whoever did, probably make the cars for California and then different cars for Illinois. So like whatever will just be California's. South Burlington is not.
Doesn't that have, doesn't that have?
That said, Laurie, if, if there was something that you felt, that the commission felt prolonged in here about what we should advocate for, the state law, family, single use plastics, for example, that at the state level, that's appropriate, that South Burlington could be an active noise.
I think that it would be great that something that advocates for reduction, particularly plastic waste, because they are becoming a major problem.
I have to say, at least the food supply, I mean, supermarket at all have voluntarily gone to paper.
Some, some.
Fire.
State law, they, yeah, single use plastics are banned.
Well, I mean, some did voluntarily first.
So there's a lot of plastic packaging outside the supermarkets.
But I'm talking about the plastic packaging of the vegetable.
Yeah.
I mean, everything is just encased. Sure, it keeps it fresher, but anyway.
Yeah.
Braving to you?
No, I don't do it. It is.
We, we as consumers.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there's choice.
Yeah.
From the box, from, and put it in a little paper bag.
Yeah.
Yes, you go to city markets, places like that, they don't use plastic.
As much.
Well, no, you don't have to use it. You choose from what you want.
Oh, I know.
Just, the other thing is that a lot of plastic containers for, or takeout could, could be replaced by the, you mentioned, the paper line.
Yeah.
That could be, whether there's a way, there's a way to encourage businesses to use it.
Do you like my action?
You read it?
Explore opportunities for advocacy and reduction of single use plastics and plastic packaging.
Yes, thank you.
Which is nice because, you know, sometimes advocacy is important and, you know, advocacy is that. Okay, anything else on this section? Okay, so land use plan, starting on page 70. Baby section.
Got a couple of quickies. Quote, traditional Vermont landscape. Burlington, South Burlington land use cannot be understood or managed in terms of the traditional Vermont landscape. Maybe if that says traditional town lands, Vermont town landscape. But South Burlington has been an agricultural community in Vermont for, forever. And agriculture is part of the traditional Vermont landscape. So I think there should be a change to that phrase.
Made a note about it.
So the specific words used in the state statute is compact villages surrounded by open countryside. That's the state land use planning goal. And that is not something that we can achieve because we don't have a compact village per se historically. It is for, that what you're sort of referring to. I, I understand your comment, your comment of our landscape is absolutely.
Yeah, our, our.
Our built environment?
We have traditional Vermont landscape.
Right.
But we don't have a traditional Vermont town.
Uh, how about?
Village.
Village.
Okay, sure.
Traditional Vermont village.
It can't be managed as a traditional Vermont landscape.
Yeah.
Historically, it was that way. I, I wonder why don't we just leave that out?
I think the intention though, is what Kelsey said, is we've always kind of been, that's absurd, but close to Burlington, this has always been.
Yes.
We were never really a little village.
We don't have it.
Yeah. I think that's what you're trying to call out.
Could we just, it does say that first. Did you say maybe just group with that something? Because first it says we didn't have a.
There's not been much of Vermont and did not naturally settle. So maybe we just leave that, that sentence out.
South Burlington has never had a historic center.
Well, we could leave that and then just, South Burlington's land use cannot be understood.
And was originally, and was.
And was shaped uniquely by being originally part of Vermont.
Yeah.
And we just leave that whole sentence out.
But I have, I have sort of now collapsed it. South Burlington has never had a historic center and was shaped uniquely by being originally part of Vermont.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you. And then at the bottom of the page, since the mid 2000s, the city has shifted focus to infill in built areas and conservation of natural resources in the written land. That sounds really aspirational to me, but that's not what I've seen happen.
So the, there's a bit of a delay between policy and development. So there are currently things that are still under construction or haven't even began construction that were permitted in 2005.
Like the O'Brien project right now?
No, O'Brien is recent, more recent, but cider mill two, the second phase of cider mill was much earlier. Spear Meadows had a whole thing with litigation. So that was much earlier. So I think it's a maybe a difference with shift in.
But I, I just, I mean, attempted, we just, the, the O'Briens are doing what they're doing, which could matter in different, it is certainly not infill in areas that have already been developed. And the Hill Farm is, is sitting on the, on the, on the chopping block right now. So I, I don't know how, I read that and I, I go, God, I wish that was true.
How would you like to phrase the statement that is capturing the, this, this is not intended to be a policy statement as much as a explanation of the establishment in the 90s of the first SEQ zoning. And then the TDR program came in in the mid 2000s. And then you revised it, you're putting out of that blocks. It's not necessarily a, it was and it isn't. It's intended to capture the paint, the farm, some.
How about since the mid 2000s, the city has made efforts to shift focus?
Yeah, because I don't think it's, as a, as a layperson, I read that and I see what Laurie sees in O'Brien. They did not concern that it working lands and they didn't do it in a boot, in a boot area. So it doesn't, I'm sure that we've done that.
Sure that we've done that.
And, 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 and yet I think that what's expressed there is a really important goal. Um, and, and last night Andrew Chalmers was talking about, um, the feral property having so much yellow on the feral property and wanting to see it more green. And my eyes were drawn over to the Hills Hill property, which is orange. We were struggling to put orange along the list and run.
Although I will say last year you did, or two years ago, there's a plan for mission on that book, did, take, did, did assign habitat blocks of forty acres on that.
No, I do understand that, but I drove by it again today and, and could see five hundred houses on it, just sort of breaks my heart. Especially when the sacred trust preserve our.
Unfortunately, you're fine.
But, so I just, um.
So what do we want to change in that sentence since the mid two thousands?
I just added the words made efforts to.
We're just making.
I had a question right up front that Lori's finished.
Go ahead.
About the sentence at the end of the first paragraph, where you say it, it provides guidance for all future, um, decision making. And I'm wondering whether that actually should be a goal, that the land use plan does that, provides guidance for policymaking.
That is the purpose of having a municipal plan. So I think it's even higher than a goal. Like it's, it's the whole reason to do this.
But well, should we just also add it to the goals or the other point?
Um, I guess what I'm saying is that it's not, it's to me not a goal because it is what it is.
It's the sole purpose of the plan.
Yeah.
Understood, but what about?
You don't have a goal to.
What about people who are, are, are guys out there?
So there's a section in the pre, in the very beginning, in the introduction about authority and purpose. And I think what you're saying is there as for the whole plan.
I, I think maybe what I was trying to get to is that the land use component of the plan, as stated here, takes everything and culminates into a singular, this is where we resolve the differences.
I guess my.
So the future land use map should be representing the, they're looking at the other, all the other maps and saying, this is how we resolve it and that clearly stated.
I guess, to me that is, and it's, this is your document of permission, but it's, to me that is, it's a definitional statement instead of a goal. It's not the same thing in my head, but maybe my brain is just organized.
Or is it, is it high enough, early enough in the document to be more clear?
The group is organized, I missed. That's fine. Um, I just thought it would be helpful to the lay reader to see that as a bullet in the, as an action.
How about it just be bold where it is?
So up in the introduction, under how to use this plan.
Yeah.
This sentence here, the future land use section accompanying map describes the city's long range vision for land use across the city. And it talks about the guiding principles, what it's used to guide city policy in the coming years, communicating along the vision to the public. And then in the authority, it's, yeah.
In this case, you say it's used to make decis, for decision making. That's, it's a little different.
But it's guidance for all future decisions.
If you don't want to do it, if nobody wants to do it, it's.
One more thing on the bottom of seventy. The last line says, goals of having a dense walkable vibrant city center, investment in infill along arterial corridors, thriving residential neighborhoods and environmental resource protection have remained. So the goals have remained. Um.
So part of the point of this is that the city center, the plan for city center is not something we came up with yesterday. This is a very long term thing that's been in works and process and being evolved over time since the mid eighties or.
So I would say have remained and, and continue to be, uh, and continue to be implemented or something like that because we're not there yet. And when I read it, it makes, it sounds like we've had this goal and so we're done with it, but we're far from done with it.
I also had in addition to that, to the end of that same paragraph, instead of ending where it does, with the words have remained the primary goals.
So I suggested the words and continue to be the city's focus. Would you want?
Oh, I didn't see that. I just read, have your made the primary goals.
Oh, he just suggested this thing about that, so.
I'm on the same page. Do you want it to say primary goals or city's focus? You care?
But, okay. Primary goals, just I think it's strong because it's a goal and it's primary.
Okay. Same good care, same primary goal, that's, that's fine.
He asked me, Michael, you said no.
I know.
You said no, when you were on the city.
I know what you're talking about. I don't want to be arguing with him and waste a lot of time. This.
There you go.
All right, next.
On page seventy-two and throughout, there needs to be, uh, consistency around, uh, principally versus primarily.
I know.
Okay.
There's some cleanup.
So I just.
In that new language, definitely. I think that, I think that whole list just needs to be updated.
Yep. Yep.
Um, on page.
Okay.
The next page? Yeah, next page, the, under the heading, future land use map, you, you put the future land use map includes a future land use map.
This future land use plan includes a future land use map.
So do we need both?
We need, the actual map reference both. They say you need a plan and a map. So we're sort of checking.
Page where we are now.
That new one.
Other, okay.
Under.
Can we then maybe just refer to the map number or something so that it?
Oh, it's okay.
So that maybe that purpose of that.
I had a question, Mark, next to the.
Leave it.
So at this point, we've read through seventy-one and then we're going to move into the land use types, starting from seventy-two. We haven't, I mean, we can just, you know, we don't have to.
Land use types. I had some questions about under the goals. Adding a goal that allows duplexes of similar scale of family housing neighborhoods that have maximum density of four inches or more, but I think that, is that something we're going to have to do?
That is what, that is what the next.
The mass one hundred.
But the goal in the high density.
Uh, I think.
Yeah, I think the goal of the high density.
We specifically don't believe have referenced density.
I'm sorry, high scale. I just.
No. You think you present.
Are we on low scales?
We're.
You know, I thought that what Michael described was in a high, high scale.
Or, but you mentioned these pieces, I think about. Is that something?
On page seventy-three, in the middle of the, sort of the bottom, it says allowing duplexes, um, in character near the, um. The name, blah, 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 uh, similar scale of housing. Isn't allowing duplexes. So.
So in my, so I guess when I was writing these goals, I was thinking of writing them in terms of how you want the neighborhoods to look and feel, uh, how, what, what it's like to live in them, how they're framing, how we can support them into the future and focusing less on the nuts and bolts of housing regulation because that's something like that, you're trying to reach these goals of how the neighborhood is.
Might be more appropriate of the LDRs.
Yeah, yeah. That's like using the LDRs could, would enable you to reach these, these things. So things like density, allowing duplexes, allowing whatever, um, we will, you will need to agree on the LDR, the mass one hundred, but.
The reason I.
Purpose of, of directing them in a certain way to reach a certain neighborhood feel.
Mm-hmm.
For, that's sort of a squishier statement.
The reason I put it there is in the next, the next page, the bottom of the second paragraph, there's a sentence that starts allowing duplexes of small scale family housing by right where single family owned, da, 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 da. The question, should this be a goal in this section? So that's why I put it.
Where are you?
Um, page seventy-three, the middle of.
I'd say the analysis and challenges of.
Of the analysis.
The first paragraph in that.
Third, fourth paragraph.
Halfway through our fourth paragraph, allowing duplexes.
I knew it was someone there. It's on page seventy.
Allow duplexes.
Was in there. Page seventy-eight or page seventy-three depending on.
Yeah.
So.
See, it's actually my page seventy-five.
Cause you've been, you've been changing the pages.
Yeah.
Seventy-three in the back.
Yeah.
Allowing duplexes of similar scale of family house on the right, which is probably how it would have been, would have little impact on the growth of these possible neighborhoods, would allow more flexibility, privilege to.
So adding an action.
So that's why I thought that it should be in the goals.
But allowing duplexes is something we have to do, so I don't think putting it in there, everything besides that.
Right, all the rest of that.
Yeah. Go, that's why I said, do we want to go beyond this, which is the, which is the similar multi-scale, multi-family housing.
And I think that, I mean, not, not to get into the zoning side, but there is a lot of different ways that it'd be planning permission over time, wanting to explore the feasibility of achieving those things. So for example, in South Burlington, we have harder numbers for the setbacks on the sides of.
Yeah.
Uh, properties in Burlington, it's relative to the width of your property. So if you have a narrow property, it's that back west, if you have a wider one, it's a larger, there's ways to, um, make achieving what is the state law easier.
Yeah.
Uh, Queen City Park, of course, has its own circle because it is Queen City Park, but some of the lessons from there could theoretically be applied also.
Yeah.
So there are ways to, to enable beyond just maybe minimum.
So what, you, you're short that, that's good. What do you recommend?
Cause this is, I think there needs to be a lot of exploratory stuff here, not just the final, that Duncan pointed to. There's a lot of weird inception around this.
Explorer.
We're going to hear a lot.
Housing, different housing types.
What if, yes, because we're going to hear a lot of those. How a lot of text out really good.
It's just, it's multi-family housing and small scale.
Cause you talked about small scale, multi-family housing. But here it just says multi-family.
No, just at a similar scale. And so, yeah, but I don't know. I can, if that's the sentiment, I can, I can work on.
Oh, we also include, um, neighborhoods serving commercial uses or not?
That's in the first one, I think. The, um, well, I guess it's actually only the goal, the goal.
The other thing in that first bullet, I had truck, come up, uses parks, transit and other, and his transit is important as proximity. Neighborhoods, we're going to point, neighborhood scale limited commercial uses, parks, transit and other amenities.
So.
Yeah.
The idea of pedestrian scale neighborhood serving commercial uses, um, that support the future health and thriving of neighborhoods. It's a great concept, but with the densities that most of our neighborhoods have, it's really hard for those who.
Right.
Businesses.
Why we need info.
To survive, well, which is why we need info. But, but it also raises the question of, uh. Is there a way to, to lower, lower real estate costs or to somehow make it so that, I mean, we have the same problem with agriculture. Aglands are so valuable that it's hard for farmers to make a living. Is there a way like the, where we have quarter acre lots on one and a half or four houses per acre in the one and a half acre zoning areas and you have land that's left empty? Is there a way that that, that land can be used for, for farmers or something like that? Is there a way to do the same sort of thing in these community areas so that somebody could have a community store because they're not paying the rents that would normally go with that kind of preference?
So I think that's generally in the level that we put into like the operations and implementation bucket. So it's like a little bit lower than this, but what I, like, instead of specifically saying like, here's an idea of a way to achieve it, it's, it's focusing on what we want to achieve. Uh, but I did add the words and encouraging to support for every neighborhood through allowing and encouraging infill in small scale commercial use, which I think the encouraging is a little bit more active. So it, it, it provides enough support for something like.
Encouraging, so there can be ways to encourage.
So there's, so we can find, so we can apply for grant funding that would, would purchase or subsid, allow us to subsidize the purchase of land like that would might be.
Or if you go to make an LDR amendment in two years' time, so David, we can point to this and say, well, that's why we're allowed to do it.
It's, yeah, it's not just allowing it to happen, it's allow and encourage.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So would, it reads now, explore, I can't read it from the second.
Multi-family housing and similar scale, a single family duplexes to support thriving neighborhoods.
Which I'm going to work on the wording. It's a little bit clunky.
And support thriving neighborhoods by allowing and encouraging infill and small scale commercial use.
Yeah, that's the one.
Yeah.
And those have to be just duplexes. I would, of both family, it could be duplexes or.
Yeah.
That's why she put multi-thick.
Okay, any higher scale?
I do have one question, um, analysis and objectives. Jeff, would you mind taking up some? Yeah, sorry, I did have one question on analysis and objectives on the higher scale, thirty-five. The first paragraph edge would need to be evaluated for potential bring up to current community standards, which are, just wondering, I, I'm not sure, like how, if somebody read that, what would they, how would they reference that?
What's.
I think, I think that those were a couple of words that I put in there. I think I was trying to say, uh, I'm sure there's a better way to say it. I think I was trying to say that we, um, that maybe some of those neighborhoods were built without much park space associated with them. Today's expectation might be that, um, that we find a way to reinsert some parks in those areas.
So it's a community standards for, for parks and amenities.
Yeah, I was just, I was just trying to clarify.
Well, it's not about transportation network, street skate, community gathering spaces. So like the white lanes and some of those, some of them, they don't have any sidewalks. It's supposed to be all of those.
So I'm getting what Duncan's saying, that standards to many people, including me, implies there is a book somewhere.
Or there's a chart or something.
Yeah, yeah. Where, if we replace the word standards with what, with actually also the word expectation. word expectation, community expectations, that you would have some.
Yeah, as long as somebody can reference back to what those are.
Goals.
Community goals, which is our own, which we have a, or. Community.
And?
To, to goals and.
Look at that, coming full circle.
Oh my god.
Nobody can.
Nobody can argue.
They're timing to our main opponents with the market.
I know.
You timing us, Paul? How we doing?
It's nine o'clock and.
Okay.
But I've only got, I've only got four thickies.
Four thickies, right.
I had one more thing, very rash. Page seventy-eight, just where you mentioned the, the parks, E.G. Zemestie Park, Jacy Park, I think you should add Farrell Park and Bankris Parks there. I take care of just about all of them.
I love.
Uh, top of page seventy-four.
Low scale, um, the description.
Two paragraphs above of higher scale.
Is that for instance?
Here.
Yeah.
Farrell and. Anything else in higher scale? The principally residential higher scale. Balanced high-scale mixed use.
Which I don't read.
Yeah. Um, my focus would be something in there, you heard, or also residential development. Would that, would that be in the other, isn't that that new category now?
Which?
I see you have a comment in the balanced high-scale mixed use over the high-end goal about allowing residential development and business parks.
Which section is that?
Page seventy-six.
Balance mixed use.
Except it's the goal.
That's, that's actually, that's interesting, that section. I'll bear you.
Yeah, there was a, but I had a question before that, um, uh, when you talk, because when you talk about maintained green space, what is that?
Well.
Uh, that's under, but just above the beginning of balanced high-scale mixed uses in the last paragraph, previous section, high-scale residence, starts with higher-scale residential living necessarily. And at the bottom, it says this should be, should be seated.
This should include seating conversation.
Should include.
Yeah.
Convent, and maintain green space, but I'm not sure what it is.
Maintain green space to move, was, so there's active play spaces and there's maintained green space. Um, I think it's more, it's like the un, unstructured lawn, like you went to throw a frisbee around, you're not going to be on a soccer field that's programmed for you to soccer.
Bankris Park would be an example.
Yeah.
Because it's just a few.
There's some mode, mode open lawn that you could go to unstructured stuff.
That's in this building lobby, need for where they can like that. So they can set it up in this room and then carry it out somewhere. So that kind of space. This was two hours ago.
On the wall.
We're looking for a grass, piece of grass where we can do it.
And the Mary Street.
And have you ever seen real competitive management?
It's crazy.
It is one of the most insane sports I've ever seen.
It's a leather sport. It's very tough.
It's one of the toughest sports. It's like the Russian.
No, no, not that one.
You're watching. I bet you that you're on this, it's crazy.
You don't see, sorry, I started that once.
Okay, no more bad jack on.
We digress.
Okay, my one note change.
Uh, no, not on that, that's just for clarification. They encourage allow some residential development within certain parks. Uh, we've talked about it.
We have a whole nother land use category.
Yeah. Anyway, except the next thing. But it's also a mixed use here.
Where, where did you see that, Michael?
I added, I asked whether that should be added.
High-scale mixed use too.
A business park almost definitionally is not in the areas that are this high-scale mixed use.
What I mean, which we renamed.
I know.
More specific, why, just saying for Michael, what's, renamed it high-scale balance of residential and commercial, right?
Yeah.
So that, the title of it.
So it wouldn't have a business park in it.
So all the business parks, they, and where they had to be residential is on page seventy, that we have a whole new category for secondary residential. It includes technology park, utility drive, general.
Yeah.
So in this particular, in balanced high-scale mixed use, what does that include?
That's Shelburne Road, it's Williston Road, it's city center, it's the, it's, sorry, I should say Williston Road.
It's a mix of commercial and residential.
Yes. It's not a business park.
Goes somewhere else.
Yep.
Okay, but we can move into that section, because that one's next, the principally commercial industrial supporting. Right, then principally conservation and open space, so that's.
I got a question in bullet number two. Allow for landowners to make use of their land with limited residential and my question is, why are we allowing them residential areas?
Where, I'm, oh. So on page seventy-nine, I do principally conservation and open space and goals. So, um, Gloria, part of the reason that it says that is because our NRP has a vision that if you own a piece of land with all NRP, you're like a one house or something, this is going to be happy. So this was to like, is, is it still allowed?
But aspirationally, are we trying to move away from that?
Um, I don't know, I mean, you have to buy that land.
Yeah.
So instead, we have this other system of laws where they continue on the land.
That suggests that you might, you might be able to reflect the objective a little bit more clearly by starting with conservation, agriculture, and renewable energy, and then saying, and limited residential, sort of in the, in the order of actions.
Mm-hmm.
Like a little bit more, or, or very limited residential, because it is very limited there. It's not, you know, for.
Yeah, so if that became last, the last, that, that would be better.
And maybe add very.
Yeah, and add very limited.
Like them?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Does that, does that captain the line?
And that, can we go to the first paragraph under principally conservation and open space areas?
Mm-hmm.
We say, um, in the last line, that the conservation easements on a number of parcels throughout the city, including each of the city's parks, but we don't have any on any of the parks.
You have noted for, for easements, as conservation easement, so.
Um, would you put it as a goal?
Well, so we have a, well, um, so for example, we have placed the conservation easement on the former renewed properties that are now bread and butter. We don't own it, but we funded the Land Trust to promote that we conserve that land. So it doesn't necessarily refer to parks, it says a number of parcels throughout the city.
It says including each of the city's parks.
Just because if we cross out the words including each of the city's parks, everything will be fine.
Yeah, because each of, all the city parks don't have.
Yeah.
It's a big, it's a good call, my folks.
Yeah.
Okay, we can have it as a goal, and we would like to have the parks protected by conservation easements, but it's another story.
Maybe you have some goal suggestions here, too?
Yeah, um, the wording is rough, but, um, it's sort of as a, as an aspira, aspirational idea, um, and I've given the reason for putting it there. And climate change has rendered a lot of our traditional sources for food, our west, for example, unproductive or nonproductive, you know, drought, they can't grow anything there. So keeping farmland, yeah, available by coastal use, it's for food production is, I think, a very important goal for us to strive for, to go for.
And we also learned in the last week that the low-lying productive lands are running into problems. And I was listening to farmers talking about it today and saying that they're turning in their high, high field, putting their milk in.
It's brilliant. So. Yeah, I was gonna, can I digress from, does anybody know what happened to the Delta Farm in this five year, where they completely wiped out? Was it, the whole farm is in a flat?
I saw it.
I don't know details, but basically, there was fire.
I know, it's a battle. So, sorry, sorry for the digression. So that's the reason I put that in there, and that's up to, for discussion, where we should try to have some effort or at least ambition.
So there's an interesting interplay here between the principally conservation open, open space land use type goals and some of the environmental goals. And sort of maintenance and supporting of agriculture and, and open lands that are used for agriculture, I already suggested was, was added and beefed up that, no, not. Um, in the, um, yeah, in the environment section. So it could go in either place.
Or both.
Or both. It's just, just noting that it's not absent.
Yeah, I like putting it in both. Accentuates the importance of our good new timeline.
Can I ask, let me ask a question, does it, we say keep all farm, what, what, in areas that are.
Undeveloped farm. Undeveloped, because it's being developed again.
Well, or, or if it's, we do have areas where open farm.
And, and like bread and butter in their, in their, what they've done with the helping farm, they've actually done a lot, they're allowed to put housing in for.
Off there.
Off there.
Yeah, yeah.
They, they're allowed to put housing in for the farm.
Well, you're very, very clearly delineating what a place like the Hill Farm. Well, it's not a farm, it shouldn't be a farm, but.
Well, you guys, are you, are you, it sounds like a couple of people are saying, maybe this language is important, but, but maybe you have it too strong.
Just reword, I mean, I just wanted to give you an idea. I, I'm saying the thing, but I also don't.
Well, also note that in this section, you've identified geographic areas to which this applies. So that the, the land that is shown as principally conservation and open space in the map includes a portion of the Hill Farm, the Judasian, the Hatat, but not the other portion of it. So in some ways, this is a good place to make those statements because it's the area that you determined that on balance, that's where you said that, that goes in the conservation qualifier.
Should it, so should it say that we need a suggestion?
I have another goal. I think you're starting with the, keep all. I don't have, I don't.
Maintain.
Yeah, maybe maintaining farmland, or maintaining.
I don't think you should cross over forward, just.
Maintain or keep. Because for example, Michael, to, to, the bread and butter farm has a specific goal of returning some of the farmland to a natural ecosystem that prior farmers, they felt was not an appropriate use of the land. So all, doesn't necessarily always be the most people wanting to land thrive.
No, sorry.
Maintain farmland, open and available for agricultural, that's good food, and that's good food production.
And then the reason, the climate change, think you can delete that, but I put that there because that's the reasoning.
Yeah.
The last bullet is.
We're just. Maintain farmland, maintain farmland, open and available for agricultural.
Yes.
I assume that that's.
Soy-based plastics.
Yeah.
I know, soy. From how soy, the big soy producer.
This is hard.
Yeah, and I added a bullet about conservation easement in some of the city parks, potential areas. Touched on it before.
How do you feel about the conservation?
Oh.
No, we, it wasn't appropriate where we had it before.
Is it appropriate principally conservation and open space areas?
I think it's the same discussion because all the parks are in that area. So you're having the same discussion.
Okay, let's not go back.
Uh, in the next paragraph, um, approximately, the approximately thirty-one percent currently not developed, moved into proven people conservation or regulatory. I think the regulatory part is protection, not conservation, as I had this conversation before.
So regulatory protection.
Yeah.
It's not.
Okay, getting into the geographic areas.
Just above that, in the, in the paragraph above that, the section says conservation areas should only extremely limited residential development.
Missing a word.
Something's missing.
Should only allow, should allow only, no, should only allow. Wait, now.
Well, we'll be good since.
Right about geographically.
Should allow only extremely.
Limited, yeah.
Allow should only.
Allow should only.
Yeah.
That's great innovation.
Yeah.
Add the law.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anything in the geographic land use areas?
No, we have no goals in the central area.
Correct.
Suggested a few.
Central area, the, the, the central after, of course, the first, first.
So I don't have goals for any of these.
You have actions.
I have actions. Um, that is mostly intentional with the idea that the geographic areas include sections of the land use types, and we're orienting the plans to land use types. So if you're in the northwest and you're in different sections of the northwest, you have the different goals from the types. Um, and all the sort of subject areas would also apply. So the action, in my, again, for my brain, so welcome to my brain, um, in my brain, actions were the specific things, the things that were specific to the geographic areas that were steps to be taken forward that were cross-cutting against, across the land use types in that area. that were steps to be taken forward, that were cross cutting against, across the land use types in that area.
I think Michael would call that that are the same things.
Oh, okay.
So, I'd say, go for the discussion and I agree with that.
Okay. Oh, yeah.
It's generally an action. Encourage a high intensity or very high intensity in areas of land use.
It's the, these are the, the, the areas where it would be possible in the future if we do some courageous zoning. That one, that one, you know, maybe ten stories or seven or eight stories. We need, we need the density, and th- those are the kinds of places where you can do it. That's one. And then we all know that there's a public outcry and a, and a promise to have a village green here. So I think it should be a goal.
Oh, how village green?
I just scream that. Village, village?
Yeah, to have it look like, yeah.
Yeah, unfortunately, yeah, we all, I think that was the vision, but, you know, the, the people who made the vision down on the land said, no, they don't. But, but, you know, it's not too late, I mean, so when we're skiing, you know, those are all big backs built, you know. Like they've come a good job, streetscapes, trees, starting to play, like scale kind of thing. And then there's new city where, where happy living is, they'll have bean and.
No, no excuse.
No, there's no excuse. A lot of, yes.
It's not, it's not.
So Michael suggesting an action, I guess, that would be to create a village green in separate models that seem.
Yeah.
Why, what, we want it to be a goal.
Well, I think we just had a discussion about how there's no goals.
It's just goals.
But it's a real good action.
It's a good action. It's only semantic.
Okay, that seems like a good, maybe together goal.
At this. At nine thirty, probably.
Boy, get out here, my dad already ran.
No, but goals carry more weight than.
I know.
You don't have to go wrong.
I would say village streetscape.
That seems good.
Yeah.
Lovely action. But it does, Michael suggests acquire the land for a village green, and I think something specific, helpful action that he asked me as well.
Council's looking at it.
Do you, does it need to be a separate action to acquire the land? Or can we just say we want to.
Can I just, yeah, that's fine.
And include.
Can I have those two?
Yeah.
Say we want, I mean, just.
I'm just, where you got your words as well as the.
And then, um, if you have a suggestion about where high intensity could go, um, does it need to be in the text or just going to the.
Michael, do you mean specifically north of Williston Road? Is there a reason that it couldn't be the, the core of the city center?
It could be, oh, Johnson Farm, that's why I put.
The Johnson Farm or the University Mall.
Okay, so, so the.
Because it's, it's on the other side of Williston Road that.
Right, so that area is also T four. So if you wanted to say throughout the four base code area.
Uh.
Throughout the core of city center.
Section bar that goes behind all those stores where.
Up to the habitat block, yeah.
It's, it's all transit form?
Yeah, up to the habitat block and then it's a hard habitat.
And it goes down into the valley anyway.
And it's already shown as the red on the map, so I guess I was wondering if you can even just say it also.
Red, how high is red?
Red is the highest.
But, I mean, I don't think it's necessarily a bad goal that the red also applies to action through a Shelburne Road. And if, if you want to specifically state that this is the area to have the highest of the high. Um, because even within red, there can be, so along Shelburne, we talk about sounding noted activity. Here we could talk about establishing the.
The reason I see it that way is that it's, if we're gonna go to fairly high lies, then that's the place, maybe land that's available to do it because you're still gonna have mixed use along Williston Road, which will be lower, no doubt.
You can do it in the university mall.
Well, do you have a suggestion on how to work with Michael saying?
I guess, I guess I'm broadly slightly to suggest that the, that this central area, um, in, you know, the core of the, I mean backwards, but the core of the city center, I uniform base code area, T four, T five, to, um, you know, have this be the highest intensity in the city.
Because, yeah, T, T one, there's only five, five stories.
To that, right, T five, yeah.
There's three times itself, bro.
That's what's.
This is T five.
Uh, the city hall and the two sites next to it. So the difference between T four and T five is commercial for a story and one word total story six instead of five. That's more T six, which we don't have.
Next one, it's coming, we're looking for T ten up there.
Okay, so, um, anything else under this whole central district? Okay, northwest. Okay, um, northeast. So southwest.
I've got two, a couple of things on southwest. Uh, possible actions, uh, protect, conserve, undevelop shoreline and adjacent lands wildlife corridor. We've got creating along the shoreline there with having it be a proposed park. Wouldn't an action be to, uh, actually try to make that happen?
This is what we already got, um.
Eighty seven. Yeah.
Yes, I said, uh, look, we don't know.
I know, we don't, uh, we don't know, but, but, um, we didn't know, uh, we were apart at one point, we didn't know.
I mean, it's referenced in the map, so.
It's referenced in the map and then it's also referenced in the text. You wanna suggest the wording?
I just said protect, conserve, undevelop shoreline and adjacent lands and wildlife corridor. Everybody know? Yeah, I don't know, yeah. It was not protected, South River ten years ago, at a pit.
No, I just, if that's possibly slightly different than the official map, which is, um, sought the acquisition of it, but not necessarily the, I'm not exploiting here, the, the protection of it. Seeing that there could theoretically be a use for, well, not really where the, where the map shows it, because it's all placed there, but.
It wouldn't be a marina there, but it could be a, a, a park.
Right, there's an old, there's an old, um, building that was a, a, a camp that could be a gathering.
That building's gone. It's a building, all the buildings are gone except for where we both have.
So, I mean, it's like a really nice, like there could be community access there. So maybe protect is.
And there is a very small beach there that theoretically have a.
It's more opportunities, sure, for community access.
Oh, there, there are.
So it's in the narrative.
Opportunities are being explored, not by the city, not by the planning commission, but they are being explored.
Okay.
That seems like, so we'll put that in there.
And one other that I had, which, um, is specific to Queen City Park Road and Central Avenue, would be pedestrian infrastructure upgrade. As we talked about wanting to have a walkable city, and it's one of the scariest places I walk in, I walk there all the time.
Where is this?
Queen City Park Road.
Yes.
Once you get past the water treatment plant, there are no sidewalks. There's a little, there's a little catwalk over the narrow bridge, and then there are no sidewalks. And then you get on Central Avenue and there are no sidewalks. And there's a lot of red rocks parking traffic there and cars coming and going, and you're walking in the street.
So I, I don't disagree. I'm trying to be consistent through the plan, where we don't call out other sections that don't have sidewalks or are not safe. Um, does that all adequately under, under the complete bike head transportation network and infrastructure sidewalks in that whole goal and in transportation?
Maybe, but in the southwest, you do talk about, uh, creating, uh, safe transit across Shelburne Road and other things like that, so this is just trying to create safe transit.
I usually, that should be something that goes to the bike and bit, and make sure it's on there.
So we did, we did just last year with Burlington Scope, that exact project. So we have a scope design for bringing the share case path.
We have a scope design up to, before the bridge, and then after the bridge. That's nothing for the bridge, the bridge was left out of the scoping.
Right.
And that's the most dangerous part.
The bridge is called Shy.
Is that the warehouse?
It's the, the city of Burlington. I think the bridge is technically in Burlington, but then as soon as you get over, you get back and zigzags all over the place. But it's a part of the city that is just sort of no man's land, and nothing gets done there. It's been an issue for decades.
You're speaking with the brain itself, very specifically.
I'm also talking about Central Avenue, which is not part of the scoping study either.
So the future. So the, the bike head infrastructure map shows a planned recreation path along Central Avenue. As a, as a geographic thing, I think that we might want to do a small, a small tweak where it shows that it exists over the bridge, which is technically true, but actually probably.
Exists over the bridge, but as soon as you get on either side, you're walking in traffic, and there's no shoulder.
It's right.
I invite anybody to come walk there.
So maybe we need to update that map and make sure that's adequate.
Yeah.
So what you're saying?
Trying to do that.
Well, we have to walk it all the time, of course.
So Laurie, it sounds like that the map update is gonna make.
Okay. And then the last thing I had was, uh, the Farrell Street area and housing, retail services. The future Farrell Street area includes creating recognized node activity by adding additional housing. There is no green space there. There is the park behind the, behind the Vermont desk, but in that whole area, there's no green space at all. And we're talking about trying to create green space in densely populated areas and something that has to be.
Well, there's, there's green space here, which is eastwards, but, but the commercial property is on Farrell.
Yeah.
There's laser placed, there's a lot of open space.
There's a lot of open space there.
So that could be.
But I was talking about, if you're looking between, uh, shaws and all the shit, like housing stuff and all those buildings.
So, um, no, see, so. So in afterwards additional housing, I just added green recreation space as something to be added. Um, I would also say, like, putting that in there, like, I'm perfectly happy to put that phrase in there. It, it would be something in the park's master plan process that, but part of that process is identifying deserts, recreational space desert. So that would be.
So maybe it goes there, but there is a recreation desert.
Yeah. Yeah.
Do we call it out? Probably have something called it Shelburne Road corridor in general.
Yes, well, that's one of the, it's one of the pretty little parks on Shelburne Road corridors, but the action.
And do we talk about in the analysis of challenges? I thought that we had something specifically said that is missing. Or maybe it's just that, that it's the, it's the mixed use areas generally in the, in the overall land use plan, that mixed use areas are part of this because they were historically commercial areas.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can you come in with the substance? Stories of retreats that prevents commercial strip turn back several.
It's, it's not in a negative sense. It's, well, I mean, if the result's negative, that the, the commercial strip along Shelburne Road faces Shelburne Road or Shelburne Street, and the residential neighborhood sort of faces itself, faces itself, it's, they're not well connected. I mean, there's streets, but they're not kind of integrated, there's no kind of blending in between. Um, it's really, it's like, it's the same, it's the same situation, Laurie, it says eastwards and orchards, where you have a neighborhood that was developed kind of facing inward to itself, and then the commercial development that lines the corridor faces the corridor and the, the.
There's very little interaction.
There's very little interaction between them, and there's very little connection. It feels like there's a wall, it's like it's two different things.
Feedback that we heard from folks is that folks saying the orchard's neighborhood don't feel that Shelburne is really part of their neighborhood.
Right.
Um, that if, with the possible exception of the Burlington, uh, fatal jobs, that kind of means that, but largely speaking, it's sort of like it's there, but it's not our neighborhood, it's for the pass by traffic going fifty miles an hour. And imagine the scenario where over time, those Shelburne Road businesses felt like they were part of the neighborhood more. You know, like, it's beginning to happen on North Bank and Burlington. You know, the North Bank is starting to feel a little more like part of the neighborhood, and is that it just being a thing that is along the road? That's what that's trying to.
If I change the phrase to like, the neighborhoods in the commercial strip are not integrated with each other or something like that, I didn't know if it was the turn our backs that felt.
Yeah, it's sort of.
It felt.
It feels like it's intentional, like they've been fighting as a.
Right. Um.
Yeah, maybe it's for the orchards that equanimously, because you have a little, like, that little, um, various iterations that you've heard about. It's trying to be there.
Yeah, should we take out these?
Yeah. Yeah, I think that it's a different level of, um, issue.
Yeah.
A little in these place, that's everything almost been called there, that's.
Okay, great. Um, the, so southeast, turn ninety eight.
I have somebody on page eighty.
I guess I'm on eighty quickly, for, for a southeast area action. Could we have an action, and this goes to the bike pad also, but connect bike trail network. Right now, the southeast quadrant has bike trails that are little sections that aren't connected. And it would be great to have a goal being, have them be interconnected bike trail.
So I, my bet is that's, that's a citywide problem, not just a southeast problem. So it's kind of suited in the transportation of the overall, we need to do this through, you know, all of these different areas. We have bits and pieces, and something that's happened recently is when we've acquired bike paths and sidewalks and things and new developments, they end at the borders.
Yeah.
So you have new developments with name that ends that are not connected to other things. I think that's, it definitely occurs in the southeast quadrant, and it occurs, there's more of the recreational stuff in the southeast quadrant, but it's all, it's, it's a citywide thing that.
I propose a friendly amendment to it.
Sure.
I think that we don't talk about the walking trail network in the southeast quadrant. It is specifically in the XQ, that if you look at all the various different bits and pieces, there are a few key properties.
Away from being.
A massively connected walking network, um, that you'll basically all like quarry to South Village.
And, and it's.
And that's sort of an off road.
It's actually a motorist's trail.
Yes, in some cases, bikes are allowed, but yes. It's more of a trail than a path.
Michael, you have next to me.
On page eighty nine, where it starts in twenty twenty two, the airport reserving pass course, and it ends with, um,
Where?
Page eighty nine or eighty four, depending on. You're in the northeast.
You're in the northeast.
You go back.
You're back several sections.
Interface with the airport, it's cool. Yeah.
That's back on eighty four. It's back on eighty-four.
It says that the planning commission did not reserve the area. And the sentence is at this time, or it is at this time. My question is, I thought that was a primitive thing. Assuming that the residents of the airport reserving task force folks also figured that it was not just at this time.
No, so. I see that because, you know, right now, it's on R four, which is kind of just a weirdo thing for two. What, what's decided is that there's gonna be this community driven planning process, and then there might be us sort of going back to implement what.
Some other.
Yeah, so we're not just gonna do a thing, we're gonna do.
All right.
Again, on page, the camera will ring.
Uh, so, the, you had a brief discussion about whether the future land extraction move the point. Um, we gave the direction to the capable parent of the map to put it back to where it is today. Um, the map is fuzzy, so it's hard to see the difference. But if you were to look at the baseline data behind it, it shows the airport on the airport, and it shows the land to be planned for on the former called Land Overfired.
I think the bigger takeaway is that it's part of that community driven planning process. Instead of doing something ahead of that process, it would, it just makes more sense to include it. Not make any adjustments now, just include it in that planning process that will take time and be, you know, community involved and all that.
It's already begun.
There was huge pushback on that way.
Well, I think, and I think part of the pushback was making that decision sort of unilaterally and by the commission, instead of including it in what we're describing as that larger planning process.
And we made a change back to the airport, let it go, and we understood.
Yep.
And then I, I think I raised this before, I had a question on page ninety. Northeast area actions, and one of them is reserved land on a potential twelve B.
So, you must be taking.
Page ninety of the package, page, page eighty-five of the draft.
Yeah.
Reserved land space for exit twelve B, I think I meant this before, that I don't think that should be prolonged there as an action, because it shouldn't. For one thing, all city committees, and this commission preferred fixing thirteen and fourteen rather than talking about twelve B. So, reserving land would maybe lose, lose some opportunities to use it for more.
So, the relevance in there is to be clear that it is not a goal to have it, but also to be thoughtful to the council's action to support the findings of the Division Eighty-Nine Study, which was to say, keep it on the street was a long-term thing. So, if it gets removed from here, then the zoning potentially changes to include that. The council's endorsed Division Eighty-Nine, which was to say, we don't want to build it, but let's not take it off.
We discussed this a couple of weeks ago, and my recollection from that conversation is that we're not advocating for building there, but say, preserve that right for what may come down the road fifty years from now.
Don't prevent it.
Don't prevent it from being an option.
I must part of that conversation.
But it does say, reserve it, leave it up, don't use it by anything else.
No, what we talked about a few weeks ago is the way that it worded now, means someone could put solar flutters there, you know, thirties in the room. Farm land in the meantime, it just means don't put like a.
Nobody's gonna invest in, in farmland or, or a solar farm that's gonna be dismantled because of twelve B.
So, it's reserved. I think the timeline of the twelve B would almost certainly.
Beyond my lifetime.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be beyond most farmers' concern, probably.
And beyond, beyond most of our lives.
That's right.
So, I think the point, if you talk to.
Yeah.
And on, on. Page. It's the southwest section. This is page. Ninety-two or eighty-seven, eighty-seven. There were no goals there, but we've talked, I think, in the planning commission, when we were looking at the districts or the zones, and we were trying to consolidate, we talked about both Swift, the Swift Street district and the Allen Road district. And there, there are, there's an opportunity there for us to. To get some housing.
Agreed, and, and as, as noted, the, the primary use of the future land map is the area, the, the balanced residential commercial uses that embeds that. The actions here are where is it different than the general? So, I think that Michael's two goals here are, that are already goals of this entire red district. The reconnect community across main transportation corridors is specific to this area, because Shelburne Road is such a barrier, the general statement of mixed-use commercial areas. But if you wanted to, I guess, if you wanted to call it Swift and Allen Road specifically, it depends on.
Yeah, I mean, we talked, we talked about identifying nodes as a separate thing. And I, I don't, I don't disagree with those being potential nodes, like Shelburne Road and those intersections or those streets. But I think that's a little premature without talking about. About the other, about where other potential, without evaluating. Just because they're separate zoning districts now, doesn't mean they.
It was not. Oh, it was by Ask.
Oh, that's. So, we're back to.
As well. Or we said, or if I didn't break all this up.
Wait, we're somehow back to eighty-eight.
I'm on eighty-nine.
Okay, we're on eighty-nine.
Just said a quick thing, under housing and commercial, it talks about clustering for housing, uh, per unit in the one point two housing units per acre clustered, which leaves sections of land that are not, or that are open. And I was at the Common Roots presentation on Saturday this weekend, and Carol McQuone was talking about Philo Reach Farm, and they had a list of six hundred farmers. And if we've got this clustering going, where housing is done intensively, we have a piece of land that is reserved, that piece of land could be farming land that we could farm on without expenses? Isn't there a way we could?
Land can be leased to a farmer, you can't have, I can't afford to buy that.
It's part of kind of the structure of the P U Vs, that that is an allowed part of the P U Vs.
But we want to somehow promote that, because those lands are out there.
So, what's the, I'm sorry, I'm a lot of listening to the threat of what you're suggesting.
So, there, there are parcels of land that are unbilled, because we've clustered housing. Those parcels are sitting there, not being used. They could be productive fertile land, they are productive fertile land. And there are, according to Carol McQuone, dozens of farmers that are looking for places to farm. And I'm wondering if we want to somehow promote getting them connected.
I think that's what we actually just put the goal in, in the other one.
I think it's principally conservation areas.
Oh, oh, but maybe we need to also put in a very.
I guess the question is, is that an SCQ specific question? Or is that a, if opportunities exist across the city and area?
It was a question if this opportunity exists across any order. So, I don't know where it wants to get put, but when I was reading this, it was like, these are little, little gems that are sitting way so disconnected with the resources.
You added a statement under the principally conservation about, um, farmland, maybe there's an opportunity, maybe there's something to be added to that one, saying, and seek opportunities to.
To connect or whatever.
Connect or, or.
This, this.
To establish new, new small-scale parks, something like that.
Yeah.
Have it actively.
Yeah, have it actively, and, and to promote.
It's.
Roseanne and Dirk will help.
Well, one of the benefits of some of these, the restoration, restoration.
Oh, boy, that's my goal.
Okay, I think that's added, so, A, you have some SCQ?
Last thing, last thing I had is on page one. It's the enhanced energy plan equity assessment. And I didn't read it a lot, but it just, I looked at it and was reflecting back on what Tyler was talking about last night, and wonder if there's a way to, this is what we were talking about earlier, to, to bring this to the fore, to focus on equity.
Right. It's all, I'm not, I'm not following.
The second question is, how do we elevate that similar discussion being a city, a plan, why it's something that not just.
There's a, there's a sentence there that, we put it in the right place. Says we have to make decisions through an equity lens throughout, and, and consider impacts on individuals, families, groups.
Yeah, and I was just thinking, if we somehow elevate that. I would say somewhere towards the front, or somewhere where.
Just repeat that.
Yeah. Repeat it particularly also when we're, when we're doing our presentations, because that's something that, that has occurred as a, as a, as an issue. So, I just, as I was looking at this.
It would be added in, in part to the introduction, that's what I was.
It's probably taken two hours.
Okay. Well, I came back.
Good, perfect.
I have to admit, I haven't read the minutes wrong, if I didn't.
I actually hope two more things can be completed. In the old, in the two questions I think first asked, in the old conference of plan, or the. We had two maps, we had an existing city map, and we had a build-out map. And we're not in the draft, are they not, I'm, it would not have.
They are not just plans, so. Um, the build-outs, we haven't re-written, we didn't give the other thing to do that, so that didn't feel appropriate. And the existing land use categories, um.
Fifty-one.
No, what was in there was.
I think it's land, I think.
Oh, it was, I think, a more problematic than helpful in the end, because it sort of like didn't quite tell the story of what's happening.
Always.
And it, it, I think, led to more confusion friendly than helpfulness, so we're not required to have.
And then my other one map question, I just wanted to bring up, is the transportation one has some kind of road or one verge, it all really correspond to a thing planned, so I think just as the map is finalized.
Right, so each of those, each of those items are called out in the plan, because they're substantial ones, and you didn't connect.
What are you?
We set the people, the person who's making the map to the.
To the test.
So, yes, we'll correct that.
I have one last question.
I hope you mean constructive criticism.
Oh, is it, this isn't a criticism, that's a, we have talked about the developed land that wants to be left open, the open land that is potentially developed, and we talked about having a map for that. And it was in process or something, but I really want that map to be included.
So, I can show you what we have in the map, we.
Please hold.
Okay, so, we do, our, our, we actually discussed it today, according to your consultant, I will say, I will share it, I'm giving it to. Our text first, as soon as the map shows up, nobody will.
I've been dying to this for so long.
So, um, happy to show it, happy to share it, you can use it however you want to. I think that it is stronger as an analysis map than as a policy map, because it uses a pretty broad filter of development.
If you want to just send it to me and have me look at it.
That's fine. I'm happy to post it. Laurie, I'm happy to post, now that we have it today, I'm happy to post it in the map room and all the other stuff.
That's fine.
So, it's not just a map, you can turn it on, that's, I think, the value of it. You want to see?
You better see it.
You just want to see it, like. Almost.
So, you've been all night. Come on. He's got a second name, third name.
All right.
You're losing us. While, while he's doing that, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of June the thirteenth. I'll send it.
I didn't look at those.
You are fine.
I haven't looked at them, if they're fine, they're fine.
Chair.
What?
There was a motion made to approve the June thirteenth meeting while, while.
Oh, okay, you started second?
Yes.
Okay, any discussion on the. Okay, on paper.
All right.
The man has the past, we drop. Um, any discussion on that Williston thing?
No.
Okay, so there, um, the Williston file law.
Edification.
And we have the map.
The map, so it's a little funky, just because our internet is a little slow here. But the brown represents land that falls in the definition, same map that was used in twenty eighteen as developed, and the blue represents undeveloped. I mean, threshold is either, any parcel under four acres is considered developed. And if you want us to rerun it in a different category, we can run it, but that was, we just followed what we did in twenty eighteen. And then any parcel more than four acres that's at least ten percent impervious, was considered developed. To try to reflect some level of, you know, like, you have forty percent undeveloped land, but it's, we're all in this purpose itself. So, if we can run it at a finer grain, I just started with four acres, because that's what was done in twenty eighteen.
So, I'll take a look at it and see if it's. We're gonna ask a tour.
Yep.
Back to it later.
So, I hope that this helped, my hope is that this helps inform and continue to reach the future idea back. But yours is huge, but I'll post it.
Perfect, three years.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much, we did it.